Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March 5th, 2019, meeting of the Groton Town Council. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All councilors are presently in charge.
Leanne Aubrey, she's away.
Okay, and we have a salute to the flag. Oh, before we start, could everybody please silence your devices? It's distracting when we're trying to conduct business. So, we always remind each other. So, I'll remind the group, since we have a large group this evening. If everyone could please stand for a salute to the flag. And we have with us this evening some Boy Scouts from Troop 13 from Groton. Would you gentlemen like to come forward and lead us in the pledge, please? Flag is over here. I know two of you, Diego, Kyle, and I don't know the third young man.
Chris.
Chris.
Please salute the flag and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. They're here working on a merit badge for civic participation or civic engagement. So, thank you for coming out. You've picked quite the night. We learned all about citizens' petitions, right? Okay. Recognitions, awards, and memorials, I don't believe we have anything this evening. Public hearings, we do have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you read the call to public hearing? And then we have Susan Cullen Planner, too, from the Planning Department, that will talk to us a little bit about it. Please say.
Hey, it's a mouthful.
Yes, it is.
Town of Groton, notice of public hearing, March 5th, 2019. Notice is hereby given that the Groton Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, at 6:30 PM at Town of Groton Town Hall Annex 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut 06340, to discuss the fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and to solicit citizens' input. Maximum award limits up to $1,500,000 for public housing modernization, including pre-development and construction; up to $800,000 for a housing rehabilitation program; up to $1 million for infrastructure, streets and sidewalks; up to $350,000 for public service, youth, homeless, and shelter diversion programs and participation with CAN, at C-A-N; and up to $1 million for public facilities, such as reconstruction, rehabilitation, installation of public facilities, and improvements in fire protection equipment. Major activity categories are acquisition, housing rehabilitation, public housing modernization, community facilities, public services, and economic development. Projects funded with CBG allocations must carry out at least one of these national objectives: benefit to low and moderate income persons, elimination of slums and blight, or meeting urgent community development needs. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain citizens' views on the town's community development and housing needs, and to review and discuss specific project activities in the areas of housing, economic development, or community facilities, which could be part of the town's application for funding in the year 2019. In addition, the town's current 2016 and 2017 Small Cities Grants under the public housing modernization activity will be discussed to obtain citizens' input on them. Also, the, oops, known to the program, I'm sorry. Also, the public hearing will give citizens an opportunity to make their comments known on the program and approval of the program income reuse plan. If you are unable to attend the public hearing, you may direct comments, written comments, to the Town of Groton Planning and Office and Development Services at 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut 06340, or you may telephone 860-446-5990. In addition, information may be obtained at the above address between the hours of 8:30 AM and 4:30 PM on weekdays. The Office's Planning and Development Services on behalf of the Town of Groton anticipates applying for the maximum grant amount of $1,500,000 for Mystic River Homes Congregate II under the public housing modernization activity. The Town of Groton promotes fair housing and makes all programs available to low and moderate income households regardless of race, color, creed, national origin, ancestry, sex, gender, identity, or expression, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familial status, learning disabilities, or physical, mental disabilities, or sexual orientation. All are encouraged to attend. The hearing is scheduled, excuse me, the hearing is accessible to handicapped, and disability persons requiring special assistance or non-English speaking persons should contact Robert Zagami, who is the ADA Coordinator, 860-441-6222, at least five days prior to the hearing. Equal opportunity affirmative action. This was dated in Groton, Connecticut on the 19th, the day of February, and it was also placed 10 days later, and the 27th of February. So, here we are.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Cullen, please.
Yes. My apologies. Our public hearing notices are, you know, legislated by the federal government in terms of the details that have to be published, so they are long and wordy. We thank you for the opportunity tonight to discuss the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. I'm Susan Cullen, and this is my 20th year working for the Town of Groton and as a planner associated with the Community Development Program. Also in the audience, I have Paige Brock, who's the major manager of Economic and Community Development for the town, and Andrew Woodstock, who's the Senior Project Manager with Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities. Both the Town of Groton Plan of Conservation and Development and the State's Plan of Conservation and Development discuss the need for housing choice and economic diversity in our housing stock. The principles of utilizing already developed areas are consistent practices for efficiencies within the town's infrastructure. Groton consistently supports a diverse populace in age, sex, race, and origin, as well as embracing a policy of meeting the needs of low and moderate income households throughout our boundaries. The town's development and housing plans meet both state and federal objectives of the Community Development Block Grant Program. By benefiting low and moderate income households, providing safe, decent, and affordable, efficient housing, revitalizing deteriorated residential districts while discouraging displacement, leveraging all income from programs to appropriately further our priorities, enforcing housing and health codes, and promoting coordinated strategies to meet the needs of our community. The State of Connecticut's Department of Housing requires certain information to be discussed within the required public hearing for our Community Development Block Grant Program. So, I'd like to place the following items of information on the record within our public hearing. Since 1973, Groton has been the recipient of competitive funds from the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, now totaling more than $12.1 million. Some examples of how these grant dollars have been expended, including housing authority improvements, housing rehabilitation, homeownership, handicapped accessibility improvements in public buildings, parks and recreation, roads, drainage, and sidewalk improvements. Some of our earlier programs were loans made to homeowners and landlords, and the Groton community continues to benefit from the use of these proceeds that have been paid back from these earlier loans. This money is considered program income. These funds are used under a designated program income reuse plan. They are continuously used to rehabilitate homes under our homeownership programs and sidewalk and road infrastructure, as well as ADA improvements. Our 2016 CDBG grant, which benefited the Groton Housing Authority, which was in the amount of $800,000 with an $80,000 match, has been completed at this time. We rehabilitated additional units for handicapped accessibility, updated code compliance issues, added energy efficiency, and made additional improvements in the community room. All of these improvements were on the Pequot Village site that's located off of Paquannick Road. Our 2017 CDBG grant, which was $800,000 with an $80,000 match, is currently under construction at the Mystic River cottages and is at 60% completion. The Mystic River cottages are off of Elm Street in Noank. This population is restricted by both age and income, and the grant is for work with ADA accessibility, asbestos abatement, roofing repairs, exterior window and door replacements, and energy improvements. These funds are being utilized to rehabilitate the facility on a unit-by-unit basis, incorporating code compliance improvements in all of the units, as well as handicap conversions to meet current codes with an additional three units of handicap. The Groton Community Development staff, in conjunction with Mystic River Homes Congregate II Board members and the nonprofit Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, have brought to you tonight a new application for a project for their Mystic River II congregate facility in Noank. The grant award could be up to a maximum of $1.5 million to the Mystic River Homes Congregate Facility. This facility has several million dollars in capital needs, including ADA compliance, code compliance, energy efficiency projects. Our staff would recommend that the Town Council grant the authority to apply for these grant funds on behalf of the Mystic River Homes Congregate II facility.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen.
Thank you.
There was a public hearing sign-up sheet, and there was no one that signed up for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wished to speak to the CDBG public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 6:45. So, we are now on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for comments to be limited to three minutes due to the number of people signed up to speak, per Rule Number 11-A.
Okay, so, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to limit comments to three minutes, moved by Franco, seconded by Heed, and asked per the rules, this is a simple majority, to proceed with the time, time setting. So, all those in favor of limiting individual petitions to three minutes?
Any discussion?
Yes, do you have discussion, sir?
I'm sorry?
Yes, do you have discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Zepari.
I'm concerned about this because people come with the expectation that they will have five minutes, and many of them have prepared their remarks to last within the time that they are expecting, according to the rule. And to suddenly limit them at this time, and to suddenly limit them at this time seems unfair.
The, I will read you. It says, "receipt of citizens' petitions is a portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, you sign up on the sheet at the front of the room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less." Our council rules grant permission to reduce that, as Counselor Franco cited.
I understand that she's working within the rules.
Correct.
I don't think it would be fair, and that's all that I'm saying, and I'm speaking against it.
That's fine. Is there any further discussion on this? For the record, we have 33 people signed up so far. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to limit citizens' petitions to three minutes each, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Raise your hand, please. Opposed, Bum Gardner and Zepari. So, the motion, we have eight councilors voting this evening. So, we have one, two, three, four, five, six in favor of the motion, two opposed, Bum Gardner and Zepari, and zero abstaining. So, the motion carries. So, citizens' petitions are three minutes or less. You should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. I would also make the statement that, as with budget public hearings, if you are coming to the podium, you're welcome to say, "I clearly agree with the prior speaker," and you can just move on if you'd like, or you may take your full three minutes of time. So, as I call you up to the podium, we have Ed Johnson, followed by Brian Walter, please. You need to state your name and address for the record. This is Franco. Good morning, sir.
Thank you. My name is Edward Johnson, and I live at 87 Main Street in Groton. I'm speaking tonight and is being in favor of the council continuing with the four-year guiding document initiated on October 3rd, 2017, pertaining to what was referred to as the Noank School Public Garden Project at that time. I believe the task force is recommending a name change to Groton Noank Community Park and Gardens with a wider focus, but the organization is essentially the same. This next paragraph is somewhat ghost-written by somebody, but I thought it was appropriate. While there may be appropriate reasons for certain no-longer-utilized public properties to be returned to the private sector using a fair process, certain properties should not leave the public domain. These would include parks, forest land, and certain properties, which also, due to their scenic locations, are of special value. And any proposal to sell the former Noank school site is an example of a short-term municipal revenue gain in exchange for a long-term environmental, as well as a fiscal loss. I won't elaborate because of the time limit. I'm especially concerned that many of the present council members seem to have made a reversal from their previous wisdom and commendable efforts regarding the solution for correcting deficiencies involving the land swap involving the merit property site for the new middle school. This group, you, took a difficult situation, you listened to opinions, you evaluated the legal issues, and I know that because I was on the phone with one of you a couple of times, and then resolved it fairly and in a timely fashion. Please utilize that wisdom and positive attitude and apply it to this situation.
One minute remaining.
With this Groton Noank Community Park and Gardens project. Please allow these volunteers to continue with the progress they have made. Please continue to honor the current existing four-year guiding document. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Brian Walter, followed by Dr. Ray Johnson. Yes, please.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Brian Walter. I live at 65 Prospect Hill Road here in Noank. I'm a dedicated volunteer to the Groton Noank Park and Gardens. As for me, I'm not a member of the task force, but rather a volunteer. And all the time, the expense, and the efforts related to the park and gardens to date has been as a volunteer, in effort to support the task force in bringing this community a much-needed open space. Based on the last two council meetings held beginning with February 19th, some of the contents of the materials which I had presented to this group have changed as an outcome of that meeting. And one of the things I'd like to do tonight, and I will lead this with you on, are the documents have changed in the interest of making sure that the information we provide is accurate, official, and up-to-date. The two items that are being updated are, first, the execution timeline, and the main changes in that timeline is that we have moved out the beginning of the effort around the pavilion that was presented by Brian Kent. That deadline is now April 23rd. The second is the amount that's expected to be raised as part of the fundraising activity, and I believe someone will speak to that later. Second item that we wanted to update was our progress report. We agreed to keep a bi-weekly progress report, and a couple of changes have been made to that. First is, as we were notified, the council must approve the go-forward or construction of any pavilion. So, we've added that and added a status to that. The second?
You have one minute remaining.
I do. Is with respect to the fundraising. And the third of that is an actual construction period. Regarding fundraising, on a personal level, I do not feel it's appropriate to ask anyone for donations unless you can tell them what those donations are going to be used for in a specific manner. That is my personal opinion, that's not the opinion of the task force or anyone else. Lastly, I want to reiterate that I am in full support of the Groton Noank Park and Gardens facility. I will continue to do what I can, what I'm capable of, as a volunteer, putting forward 100% of my effort to ensure the realization of the town's commitment to its citizens' for public open space?
Your time is up, sir.
And the efforts of the task force. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Dr. Ray Johnson, followed by Michael Speller.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm Dr. Raymond Johnson, and I reside at 85 Prospect Hill Road in Noank. I want to thank the council and the town manager for their concern for this project. I think this evening you will have several people speaking in favor of it, and I hope that you will recognize the impact that it's had upon our community. As far as the fundraising effort, as you know from our presentation on the 19th of February, we estimated the cost for the pavilion to be $50,000. At the last meeting, Counselor Zepari extended the timeframe to the 23rd of April. It is our intent to try to raise as much of that $50,000 by that time period as we possibly can. We can assure you that we will do due diligence in raising that money. The impact of the meeting that we had on the 19th of February, we don't know yet with regard to donations. We will make every effort to represent ourselves well to the community to let them know exactly where we stand. We would ask that the council really give very serious consideration to approval of the pavilion so that we can, as Mr. Walter said, have a specific reason to collect these funds, and more important, to give approval to extend our time to the original 2021 deadline. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Michael Speller, followed by Alexis Dudden and Lilian Gay. I apologize if I mispronounced.
Madam Mayor, councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Michael Speller. I reside at 15 Smith Lane, and I have lived here for 22 years. I believe that the action plan presented by council, to council, by the Gardens Task Force and their team is a splendid and visionary plan. To create and develop a beautiful public park and garden project that will benefit all of Groton is something that all of our community in Groton can be very proud of for generations to come, and accompanied by a private fundraising campaign to attempt to pay for as much as possible, if not all, of this visionary plan. I believe that the role of council in this issue should be one of stewardship, excuse me, support and inclusion, and not one of opposition. I think the council should be genuinely thrilled that there are members of our community that are willing to dedicate their own time, effort, skill sets, and personal funds to provide a benefit like this to all of the community. Indeed, and for the record, the consensus that I'm hearing in our community is that council should be asking, what can we do to help this thoughtful plan bring it to fruition for the benefit of everybody in our community? The community wants to keep this land as passive open space and gardens. My family supports the task force as volunteers and financial contributors. We believe that the work they do benefits everybody. I would strongly encourage council to come around to the way of thinking that selling off our town's valuable resources for a short-term financial gain diminishes the desire of people to come here to live. I heard in this chamber last week that 80% of people who work in this great town do not actually live here.
One minute.
If council embraces a mindset to create new and preserve existing resources that people really want in their neighborhoods, then you, as our elected officials, can accomplish that. I have been asked by the task force to participate in a separate fundraising committee to play a part in raising funds for this project, a task I am happy to help them with. We will very soon be sending letters out to our local business leaders to help in raising the funds. Of course, if anybody wants to contribute, anyone can write a check for any amount to the Groton Noank Community Park and Gardens and send it to Clint Wright, Chairman of the Task Force at 24 Westview Avenue, Noank, Connecticut 06340. In the spirit of community support for this project, my wife Valerie and I have written a check. It's in my pocket, it's not a pledge, and it's not a promissory note. We want to help the task force with their very worthy neighborhood cause. I fully support the Noank, the Groton Noank Community Park and Gardens.
Your time is up, sir.
And I hope to seek council designate this land permanently as a park and gardens. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Speller. Alexis Dudden and Lilian Gay, followed by Kim Johnson, please.
My name is Alexis Dudden, and this is my son Julian Gay. We live at 108 Prospect Hill, which is actually the oldest structure outside what we call downtown Noank, built in 1731 when the hill looked very, very different. But I'm a history professor at the University of Connecticut, and I'm not here to talk anymore about history because I've been doing that all day, and my son still has history homework to do tonight for eighth grade. What we would like to talk about is the importance of history, which is the use of public land for the present and the future. At present, we don't even worry about the name, although it seems to be a concern of the town, and Groton Noank Public Gardens, Public Space is a wonderful name. We've never thought of it as exclusive to around the corner from our house. We spend half as much time going to Fort Washington to go sledding as we do to go around the corner, Julian, sled, because I can't drive. It is a public open space that has been vital for the 13 years of his life, but the 16 years that I have lived there, and we don't know what its value is to the future. And I'd ask everybody to think about that question tonight. When was Hurricane Sandy? When was Irene? I can't exactly remember, but it was noticeable that people with boats and trailers, they didn't know what to do with, drove them up and parked them there when they were worried about them. There is a value to the community that is not exclusive to what, even if you type in Noank on Amazon, it puts you up as Groton. So, all I'm trying to say is we're not worried about exclusivity. We welcome everybody from the Town of Groton and the State of Connecticut, as I do to my classroom and as my son does in our house. So, we would like the council, please, to consider this as an open, publicly-owned piece of land that we should hold on to for a value of which we do not know. Thank you.
And Julian is 13, so. Thank you very much. Kim Johnson, followed by, I believe it says, Myra Cooley.
I'm Kim Johnson from 87 Main Street in Noank. And for brevity, I agree with the points made by the previous speakers and probably for the subsequent speakers in favor of supporting the gardens and continuing with the original idea or expanding it even farther, but certainly not cutting it off until it has a chance to bloom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Myra Cooley, followed by Jim Rymash?
I am Myra Cooley. I live on 259 Noank Ledger Road in Groton. I have lived here for almost 11 years. I am speaking in support of Groton Noank Community Parks and Garden. Since 2016, my grandma has been working incredibly hard on her garden. She has taught me many gardening skills. Ever since May 14th, 2016, me and my grandma and my brother have been adding more plants, for example, sorrel, tomatoes, and peppers. I have seen many other kids, including myself and my brother, enjoy this space. Also, adults have enjoyed planting, walking their dogs, and enjoying each other's company. Please let this commission continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tim Rymash, followed by Tamara Rich. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing names.
My name is Jim Rymash. I have been a resident at 51 Hillside Avenue for 44 years in Knowank. I am wholly supporting this park and garden. I think it's a wonderful idea. It's an open space, and as a previous town manager mentioned to me, once you lose it, it's gone, you'll never get it back. I think we should keep this going as a park and garden. And to keep it short, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tamara Rich, followed by Christina Blaze.
Good evening, I'm Tamara Rich. I live on 40 Little Gul Lane in Mystic. I've been a member of the task force for about a month, so I'm the newest member, but one of the first volunteers on this project. Since we've been digging rocks, the community and the mission and the venue has evolved to include many more partners, a more focused effort, and a larger, bigger base of support for this open space. I agree with all the previous speakers, and I continue to encourage the council to support the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Christina Blaze, followed by Laura Phillips.
My name is Christina Blaze, and I live on Brook Street in Groton. I was an elementary school teacher in the Groton School System for over 35 years. Upon retirement five years ago, I began working at Clawchester School as a reading tutor. I joined the task force about a year and a half ago. Last spring, I brought two classes from Clawchester to the gardens. We planted several varieties of lettuce, spinach, and radishes in our given gardens. I also taught the children about seeds and plant growth. Volunteer helpers last year included Annie Ostergut, Markell Riggs, and Maureen Klein, who are all certified teachers. This year, we are expanding the program to 10 to 12 classes from Clawchester, planting and learning about gardening. The produce this year will also be distributed to the Coogan Farm Food Pantry Program. I will also have assistance this year in planning, teaching, and planting from Emma Rotner, who is the Food Corps Service Member in Groton. Emma is the school district's farm-to-school liaison. Thank you very much. I'm in full support of the previous speaker's comments.
Thank you, Ms. Blaze. Laura Phillips, followed by Cindy Batista.
Hello, I'm Laura Phillips, 154 Brook Street, Mayor and Town Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of the garden. I moved here about three years ago, and one of the things that enticed me to move to Groton was all the things that you talked about last week at your meeting, your value to open spaces, and that was very important to me, so I appreciate that and thank you. I've been with the garden for the three years that I've been here. It's very important to me as a consumer. It helps me put affordable food on my table as a single person. I feel a lot of pride with what the garden has done for the community in giving back, and I also very much enjoy the location. I think it's beautiful, and I love it as park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blaze. Or, Ms. Phillips, sorry. Cindy Batista, followed by Michael Knoll.
Hi, my name is Cindy Batista. I live at 76 McDonald Court in Knowank. Here's my message. Having a community garden and open space has been, and I hope that it will continue to be, a terrific opportunity. It is the opportunity to tend and grow a personal garden or share in the growing of vegetables, herbs, or flowers in the main or the public garden beds. The community garden offers a peaceful setting, a chance to sit quietly on a bench and appreciate Mother Nature, or amble along the pathways if that is the desire. It is very pleasant to walk about the large, open area where the Knowank School used to be. I have personally enjoyed getting together with neighbors and friends, each of us lending a hand with the assorted gardening tasks. It is quite satisfying to be at the garden, sharing community news with one another and taking note on just how the garden's growing. It is a standing invitation for anyone in our community to participate in the preparation of and/or the nurturing of the garden. Anytime, a community park and garden provides a very welcome, natural living experience. It's a great feeling to be with others in community, cheerfully working side by side with a common goal of producing delightful experiences for ourselves and others. Having a community garden-
You have one minute.
...and park really, really does serve everyone. Please vote in favor of keeping the community park and gardens. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Knoll, followed by Kathy Chase.
Michael Knoll, 100 William Street in Knowank. I'm a member of the garden task force, and I support the park and gardens. I think it would be short-sighted of the council to sell the property for short-term revenue gains, could never be replaced. I remember the previous town manager recommending that these be kept as open space. One thing I did want to mention, and don't take this the wrong way, is I find it interesting that if you live in the city of Groton, you can run for the city council or the town council. But if you don't live in the city of Groton, you can't run for the city council. And I believe that six of our town councilors today live in the city. Please keep in mind that you represent the entire town. Regardless of whether or not we can raise the $50,000 in time for your April meeting, I believe that the four-year documented agreement that we had with the town is still valid and should remain in place. Thank you.
Kathy Chase, followed by Carl Perizzati.
Kathy Chase, 146 Indian Field Road. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors. I'm a taxpayer and an RTM member representing District 1. I am here today to speak about the Knowank Garden and to give my support for Councilor Atwater's motion to rescind the agreement. The Knowank group has had control of approximately six acres of valuable property, I've heard 1.9% million dollars' worth thrown out there, since the fall of 2014 with a kickoff event laying out the garden. Approximately two acres of this property was to be used for a community garden and provide some educational opportunities in collaboration with Fitch High and Grass O'Tech. To my knowledge, this hasn't happened, as there have been no minutes, no reports submitted to the town manager as required. This started out as a garden only in the agreement between the town and the Knowank Garden Task Force. Plans have been presented on at least two occasions that I saw of building a park that in no way, if completed, and I quote, "shall be cost neutral to the town," end quote. This garden is not sustainable by this volunteer group. Nothing that was proposed to happen with this garden has happened to date. How much time do we give them while sitting on a piece of land that could be providing tax revenue to the town, thus reducing some of the burden on taxpayers? When the land is sold, a piece of the property can be retained for a small neighborhood park or garden. However, that piece must not hinder the development of or reduce the value of the remaining piece of land. We have some hefty expenses coming up that taxpayers must start paying for or are paying for already, such as the million dollars allocated to the police department for a radio system, the $184.5 million for the school project. We will start paying for this in July. The schools haven't even been built yet, and we will continue to pay until the year 2043. This on top of other capital improvement projects that are already in repayment. In addition, on December 11th-
You have one minute.
...2018, the Planning Commission strongly disapproved of selling off portions of this land as it will diminish the value. In conclusion, the original agreement was to continue on an annual basis at the discretion of the town council. I implore the current town council to rescind this agreement. Decisions by the council must be made for the town as a whole, not just one neighborhood. This is about what is good for all of Groton. Taxpayers need a break. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Carl Perizzati from 69 Noble Avenue, Knowank, sent me something to read on his behalf. I signed Robert Palm's original petition for the Knowank Garden prior to its inception over four years ago. I believe that a public garden is a great idea, but I learned long ago that any idea is only as good as its implementation. Unfortunately, the people who have taken over stewardship of the Knowank Garden since Robert Palm left town have not fulfilled one of the many promises they made to the town. Donate food to food banks, nothing done. Develop programs with our schoolchildren to educate them, nothing done. Maintain regular meeting minutes to be posted online per Connecticut state law, never done. Over the past four-plus years, 12,311 Groton taxpayers have paid for about 20 people to maintain gardens. The land occupies about six acres valued at $2 million per the Groton tax assessor. At the current mill rate, the foregone tax revenue on the land alone is over $35,000 per year. There does not appear to be one person involved that does not live on Prospect Street or in their surrounding neighborhood. I am tired of funding a neighborhood park for a few privileged residents, and at every meeting they make the same hollow promises and fulfill none of them. I applaud Town Councilors Atwater, Granatoski, Heed, and Franco for having the courage to do the right thing for people of Groton. I am tired of the Groton Town Council, this one as well as previous ones, including too many pleasers who are afraid to make tough decisions and say no to anyone. There shouldn't be a popularity contest. This should be a body that honors its responsibility to the people whom it serves. My taxes have shot up 20% over the past four years. I don't mind paying for necessities like police, fire, and schools. I'm tired of paying for boondoggles. It is time to do the right thing.
Thank you. Roseanne Katusky, followed by Clint Wright.
Good evening. Roseanne Katusky, 24 Ann Avenue, and also I am an RTM representative from District 5. Thank you, Representative Chase, for stating the facts regarding the town agreement with the Knowank Garden. It is important for the taxpayers and residents to know the history regarding the agreement. I support the town council effort to rescind the agreement with the Knowank Garden and hope it will be successful. I believe the property should be evaluated and marketed as other vacant properties in the town of Groton and put on the tax rolls. A few questions. Why are few residents allowed to have control over a town property worth 1.9 million dollars? That's 1.9 million dollars undeveloped. What other neighborhood in town has that level of influence, or for that matter, any influence or input as to how the town of Groton reuses abandoned schools? In the northeast section, we had zero say as to what happened to the Freeman Hathaway School property in the 90s, and currently we have no say in the plans for the Mystic Oral School. There should not be two sets of rules for abandoned school property based on how influential a neighborhood is. Unfortunately, since the town is paying for water, upkeep, and mowing, the taxpayers have a financial stake in the garden, and now I hear that there is talk of a pavilion which the town will have to maintain. I would ask, is this money being spent wisely? Or would getting the property on the tax rolls better serve the taxpayers? The Planning Department regularly has presentations to the RTM regarding the process of reviewing and marketing vacant school properties for the purpose of getting the property on the tax rolls. This is the process to deal with vacant school properties. The Knowank School property should have followed the same process, and the current agreement with the garden should be rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katusky. Clint Wright, followed by Gary Wells.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Clint Wright. I live at 24 Westview Avenue in Groton. As a footnote, I would like to mention that one of our representatives met with the zoning officials this evening, and Mr. Malholland indicated that there should be no reason, no conflict with the construction of the proposed pavilion. Everybody's got an opinion, everybody's got a viewpoint, just I would like to read a quote, which is in the form of a rhetorical question. The quote was written by Wendell Berry, who is actually still alive, and the question is, "How can a government entrusted with the safety and health of its people conscientiously barter away in the name of an economic idea that people's ability to feed itself? And if people lose the ability to feed themselves, how can it be said that they're free?" Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Gary Wells, followed by Dane Stevenson.
Hello, I'm Gary Wells. I live at 5 Route 27 in Old Mystic, and I represent District 5 on the RTM. This problem with the Knowank School, or what to do about the Knowank School and its property, goes back decades. At one time, Knowank School was faced with declining enrollment, and the town came up with a solution to close the newer school, the newer northeast school, which is now the School Administration Building, and bus students down to supply students to keep the enrollment up at the Knowank School. That lasted a while, and ultimately, the school was closed. At one point, it was used as a temporary senior center. There was opposition to that from the neighbors. I wouldn't say it was successful or unanimous, but they didn't want people coming in. I don't know if they thought the seniors were going to steal hubcaps, I doubt that. But I'd say that bodes ill for a park, a ballpark, recreational facilities, and things of the sort. So I would like to see a solution that's good for the neighborhood, good for the town, provides some stability instead of plan after plan. And I urge the council to treat it, as Representative Katusky said, as you would other school projects, put it out for requests for proposals. If we want to, perhaps one of the farmers from up in District 5 wants to come down and, you know, plant vegetables, or whatever they want, if they want to put a pavilion in or make it a park. I know the fire district was offered the opportunity to acquire the property, and they said they didn't need it. So I'd just say, put it out for a proposal, try to get this thing settled. There is a zoning commission in planning and zoning in Knowank, so I don't think-
You have one minute.
...the neighbors have anything to worry about. Whatever's done will be done well.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Dane Stevenson, followed by Kathy Nugent.
Dane Stevenson, 33 Eldrick Nav in Groton City. I just want to say that I find it pretty ridiculous, the claims that once this property is sold, there will no longer be any revenue, because that's not how taxes work. That's a ridiculous claim. Thank you. I also want to say I support Councilor Franco's line of questioning last month in the meeting, and I also voiced my support for the previous RTM speakers that came up. Would it be nice to have an open space? Yes, but I don't think the current stewardship is working out, and I don't think any number of name changes or, you know, new proposed goals, or no matter how many children you have come up to speak, it's not going to change the actual events that have occurred, the repeated failure to really get much done. As an engineer at EB, if I were to be assigned to a project and didn't do anything for two years, I could tell you I'd be looking for another job. I'd also like to say, if you continue to support this garden, I don't want to hear at any point any talk of cuts from other parts of the town, because you are sitting on $2 million worth of property and tax revenue thereof. So, you know, if you have that, you're sitting on that, and then you don't do anything with it, you can't complain about spending or making cuts elsewhere. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Kathy Nugent, followed by Ian Thomas.
Can you hear me? My name's Kathy Nugent, and I live at 215 Yedder Road, Mystic. And I am here also to give my support to the rescission of the Knowank Gardens Task Force guiding document. And I do agree with the previous speakers that also support the rescission. In fact, my good friend Roseanne almost fainted when she heard we were on the same side of this issue. But anyway, I would go further and say that my preferred alternative- same side of this issue. But anyway, I would go further and say that my preferred alternative would be to add this property to the list of town properties to be marketed and sold. After four years, despite the efforts of some very well-meaning and hard-working people, we find out that only a half acre of the five-plus acres is being used. I think unfortunately we have to conclude that the Noank Garden experiment has failed, and it is time to move on and get this property on the grand list. Now, I would like to give you the perspective, flesh out my arguments, by giving you the perspective of someone who served on the RTM in 2013 and 2017, when we went through some very difficult budget times, and this was the time when this Noank Garden proposal was approved. And this was a time of challenges, of tax increases, budget cuts, largely due to the loss of the Pfizer Building, which hit our grand list to the tune of 1.8 million. But we somehow managed amidst the budget cuts to find funds to augment the Department of Planning and Development, giving them a clear mission to market the properties in Groton, and particularly to inventory the town-owned properties and market them aggressively. But somehow, in this environment of budget austerity, the Noank School property was carved out-
One minute, please.
Okay. I'm just going to say, and also add, that at this time, we spent thousands of dollars on CIPs to take off the asbestos and tear down that building, and you should be able to recoup some of that money with a sale. Amount recouped so far is zero. I have nothing against community gardens, but in my mind, it falls under the category of a want, not a need, and nothing I have heard or seen since has changed my opinion. And the Town of Groton is far from out of the woods and its financial challenges. I do support the part of it to carve out a little area for a little garden and park, and I think that could actually serve as a blue point when you market the other school properties. Let's have little parks all over town, not just in Noank. And again, I was astounded at the presentation at the February 16 Council at the Hall meeting to find out that the-
Your time is up, Ms. Nugent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ian Thomas, followed by Lynn Marshall. If you have written remarks, you're welcome to leave them with the clerk.
Ian Thomas, 159 Chenecosa Parkway. I'm not going to belabor the point too much, but I do agree with Roseanne, Kathy, and the previous speakers who are in favor of rescinding the agreement and reconsidering what happens with that property. I think there is a good middle road to be found, but given the history over the past couple of years, there's been ample opportunity to make a defined effort, some sort of traction, if there was going to be a public garden there. I think there would be more desire and more demand for it. There would have been more action taken. So yeah, that's, excuse me, that's pretty much it. As far as, you know, yeah, there's six acres there that could be easily developed. It's land that was once developed, so it could be developed again. And so all the infrastructure's there, and it seems a little silly to sit on it when there's been no real traction made over the past couple of years. So there's been ample opportunity. And if, you know, maybe parcelling it out could be a way to go, you know, breaking it up, subdividing, and that would allow, if there is a place for a small acre or two or so that could serve as a public garden, that'd be great. But I think fair market value should be expected, and if there's fundraising efforts underway, and there is public support for such a thing, then, you know, maybe there should be a community organization that does that for that parcel of land. If they want to make it a park or a public garden, you know, they could buy the land and make it that.
One minute.
So, that's pretty much it. Again, yeah, I'm in favor of rescinding and reconsidering a more strategic plan for that land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Lynn Marshall, followed by Allison Marr or Meyer? She wasn't here when I asked everybody to turn their phones off, so we'll forgive Jen.
Lynn Marshall, 118 Pearl Street in Groton. And I don't have a garden plot in the garden, but I do like to walk through that garden, and I like to sit there. I like to relax there, listen to the birds, meditate. There's no other place in that area to do that. It's all private property. Private property where I don't feel comfortable if I see a bench in somebody's yard, just going up there and sitting in it. It's really, really special to have open space. So I'm obviously in favor of keeping the park and gardens there. I would hope that you would be checking very carefully the facts of some of the people that are speaking in opposition to the garden, because some of it is certainly news to me, that that whole area was developed before is news to me. That the property was offered to the Fire District and they turned it down is news to me. That when the senior center was temporarily there, while the senior center was being remodeled, there were a couple neighbors who were against it. But the Noank Fire District in general was very supportive of that, is my recall of it. In terms of the tax revenue as an ongoing, you have six houses there, and what's the cost of educating a child per year in Groton now? I don't know, $14,000, $15,000 a year, I would assume by now? So $15,000 times two children is $30,000. You're not going to get $30,000 a year in taxes from a house in that location. So it's really, as soon as you have children in school, it costs more money. Open space is a tax saving. In terms of mowing it, I don't know that Groton is coming out and mowing it. I know there are volunteers who are mowing it. So just-
One minute?
Yep. So just please, and also, I guess the one thing that really gets to me, when I hear that somehow Noank thinks it's special and they get special treatment, I really, really resent that. I'm a member of Groton. I have come here and supported open space and projects and sidewalks all over Groton. We need to come together and not be pitting one neighborhood against the other, and with a chip on your shoulder, about what one neighborhood is or isn't. We're all together as Groton. Thank you.
Yep. Allison Marr, followed by Larry Dunn.
Hi, my name is Allison Meyer, and I live at 70 Prospect Hill.
Apologize for mispronouncing.
Oh, that's fine. My family and I bought our house in 2015 with the hopes of ultimately retiring to this area from our home in Fairfield County. We were drawn to this community, and especially our property, with the open space behind our house. We were thrilled when we learned that there would be a community garden in that space. It said to us that Noank was a progressive town that recognized and understood the benefits of such a garden. Not only is the Groton-Noank Community Park and Garden Project environmentally smart, but it is also a great space for community to gather. It provides opportunities to meet others, hold special events, learn from elders, teach children, and give back to others, to mention just a few. It will be a real shame if the town decides to no longer support this project, and it may affect the way we feel about our future plans to retire here. My family is certainly hoping that you will reconsider any objections to this wonderful resource and open space that is currently available to the residents of Groton and Noank. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Larry Dunn, followed by Betty Smith.
Good evening. Larry Dunn, 91 Crosswinds. I'm here on behalf of the Conservation Commission. Submitted a memorandum to the Town Manor to that extent, and I want to read just a little bit about it for the folks that are here. The Conservation Commission supports the continuation of the Noank School Task Force to maintain the property and oversee the site as a community open space. The Commission will provide substantiating data on this topic to the council prior to you reconsidering it at your April 23 meeting. Now, and just to give a little bit anticipation of that, is one of the reasons we're interested is our responsibility as the Commission to provide support to you and the town on identification and utilization of open space. I will point out that in the 2016 POCD, that it very specifically states that neighborhood parks lend strength to Groton's residential neighborhoods while open spaces add to the overall character. So we do, and are, looking at local parks, of which there are others. This is not the only one in the Groton area. The Groton Community Garden is one such example. Now, there's two aspects when we evaluate it, and this was done independent of this specific issue, is to provide an economic model so that we can compare different open spaces, which one has the greater value, what's the best economic benefit to the town. And to that extent, when we've run a preliminary through the analysis, it turns out that with residential development and an R20 environment, there's a net economic loss to the town of 16,000 and change to the town. What that says is, we don't recoup the cost from the taxes made. In addition to that, if nothing is done to the property, there's a net benefit from an environmental point of view-
One minute, Mr. Dunn.
About $24,000 per year, this is per year dollars. That, I will admit, doesn't necessarily fall into the town's pocket, but it does get there via the approach of managing the water supply, the water quality, biological control, pollination, soil retention, wildlife. I mean, there's a variety of things that have economic values that have been proven against that. So the whole thing is trying to provide an objective measure and compare these things, and we want to spend more work on it, so we will be back with a report that we will submit that provides more information on this particular topic to you. So that's-
Thank you, Mr. Dunn, and we did receive your letter today. Thank you.
Yep.
Betty Smith, followed by Keith Hedrick.
Betty Smith, 255 Neptune Drive in Groton. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you. I'm a strong proponent of open space, community gardens, and opportunities for people to connect with nature. However, I believe that setting aside the entire former Noank Elementary School property for a garden has been and continues to be a mistake. This property is already zoned residential, as many people have said before me, and utilities are already on site. Depending on what you, the Town Council, decides to do with the property, there could be an opportunity to increase the grand list and both a short-term and an ongoing source of revenue to the town in terms of taxes. In 2014, when the decision was first made to make this agreement, the Town Planning Commission at that time had recommended against using the former Noank School property for a community garden. They gave sound, rational reasons for their disapproval of using this land for a community garden, as well as they suggested suitable alternative town-owned properties. That advice was sound then, and it is now. The town has given this community garden experiment, and the volunteers, the wonderful volunteers who have supported it, a four-plus-year opportunity to prove that the garden is a good use of this valuable property. The old school was safely demolished, and the land returned to grass. But the grass is mowed by the Town of Groton, the field of grass, as I understand it by looking at the Facebook pages, is mowed by the Town of Groton at the town expense, and the town paid for the installation of a water source to the gardens. Now, I ask you, is this use, today's use, is this the best and highest use of this property, of this town-owned property? Or are there alternatives that can be considered for this land-
One minute.
Thank you, that better suit all of Groton's residents, including the surrounding neighbors? It's time to move on and use this property as it best fits the needs of the whole town. I urge you to make a fiscally responsible decision, both long-term and short-term, regarding this and all town-owned properties, with the best interests of all Groton residents in mind. I urge you to terminate the current agreement. I appreciate the difficult decisions that you, as the Town Council, have to make on behalf of all Groton residents, and I respectfully thank you for this time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. One page down. Keith Hedrick, followed by Marie Wiley.
Good evening. My name is Keith Hedrick. I live at 156 Chenecosa Parkway, and for full disclosure, I am the mayor in the city of Groton. I thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to speak against it about this. I support the termination of the contract. There has been no significant advancement, and it doesn't appear that what was agreed upon has happened. I think there are opportunities here. One, you could do an RFP, similar to RFPs that you've done for other school properties, or if you have the wherewithal, you could assemble a committee of people and work with members of the Noank community to determine an acceptable use, and things like that could be parks, open space, or something that brings in revenue. For example, it is currently zoned for housing, so you can have a housing development with revenue for life. And if you make it senior housing, you don't have to worry about the draw in the education system. So that solves that problem. Also, I think you need to determine where the town's planning and zoning responsibilities end, and at Noank's planning and zoning responsibilities start, and the hierarchy and precedence over town property in a Fire District. And lastly, if all of that fails, and we can't reach a resolution, then sell the parcel to the Fire District at fair market value. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hedrick. Marie Wiley, followed by Bob Frank.
Hello there. Before you start your clock, I have two questions. All right, so the first thing is-
Your clock has started. I'm sorry. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Okay, so much, so much for that. Marie Wiley, 18 Hillside Ave.
Thank you.
There are reasons to have a community garden other than when you're talking about building. Somebody mentioned Bobby Palm, who was and actually lived in here for like two and a half minutes, had never lived in Noank or Groton, because I know him, because he's from West Hartford. So he was here for two minutes and went on his way. All right? So, and then people just coming up and saying things. Here's legitimate proof that community gardens actually serve a good purpose. Here's just five. You guys all received a letter from me, which I mentioned other things. It is, community gardens help provide fresh, nutritious food. Of course, with the GMO situation and millions of people having cancer, it's nice to have control over what you're eating. All right? Community gardens foster community and build networks among people. And as far as the name concerned, I could care less if you call it Downtown Groton Community Garden. I could, nobody cares about that. When the senior center was going up, or possibly going up, I lived down the street, I was all for it. All right? So saying that people are just really against it, there's a lot of stuff just being said that doesn't seem to be true. Community gardens provide health benefits and a place to retreat, as you've heard from people who go up there, from the noise and the commotion of the urban environments. Community gardens are good for local business and help reduce crime. And as a Realtor, I work for Calder Banker, community gardens actually raise the value of the homes in the community. All right? So that is, and that's all proof. You have Tufts University, New York University, all these different places who have done studies on community gardens and how they help overall the community, which far outweigh the benefits of selling the property, developing, and that foundation of all those tax things already being in place, the infrastructure, that's not real either.
One minute.
All right? Because you would have to still, if you're going to put in houses, you have to still build roads, supply electricity, supplies water, sewers, and all that stuff. And that's basically about it. I support it 1,000%. And I think you should look at the benefit of including all of Groton and putting it on your website, too, so that people can feel involved. Because it's hard for us, or them, the task force, to reach out for the people when they don't know how to do it other than Facebook. So make it a real community garden and support it. All right?
Thank you.
Who gets the paperwork? Oh, and guys, thank you for-
The clerk, please.
Thank you for standing up for us.
Bob Frank, and followed by Eugenia Vilagra.
Bob Frank, 144 Seneca Drive. I also support the Counselor Atwater's motion. I'm here tonight to express my full support to the Town Council for their actions on the Noank School Public Gardens Update Agenda item during the February 19 Committee at the Hall meeting. I support and appreciate your line of questions, which I believe are asked in a civil manner. Only by asking such questions can you come to the right decision on this issue. It's my observation that the process the town used to manage this property was flawed from the beginning. The usual method is for the Town Council- The usual method is for the town council to vote on keeping surplus property or selling it based on staff recommendations from a property review team, and not to engage in direct negotiations with interested parties. Starting in 2010, there have been multiple task forces, presentations, town council resolutions, deadlines, deadline extensions, and here we go again with yet another proposal and another deadline extension tonight. So let's make a vow to never do this again. That is legislate land use on the fly over a multi-year period. I'm suggesting the town council develop a policy for future requests for public use of town-owned property, including gardens. Such a policy would naturally consider impacts on neighborhoods and adjacent property owners, among many other things. It would also ensure fair treatment throughout the town. In this vein, I want to mention the Groton Open Space Association, GOSSA, who I believe has set the standard for stewardship of public land. When they say they're going to do something, they do it. Sadly, that's not the case with the reuse of the elementary school, Noank Elementary School property. GOSSA is a 501(c)(3), so they can sign legal documents, have a checking account, and conduct fundraising, things you reasonably expect from an entity that has public trust over public property. It's telling that for some reason, the garden group couldn't or wouldn't form a legal entity. Summing up, I support the Atwater motion. Thank you for asking tough questions, and please continue.
One minute.
And using the lessons learned from the last 10 years, I strongly suggest a thoughtful town-wide policy on public stewardship of public property be established. You could look at GOSSA and the Avalonia Land Trust, for examples. And I just want to say, I was on the town council back in 2013, just to set the record straight, on the Noank Fire District, they were not denied the property, they wanted it, they were denied the property by the town council. The town council at the time did not feel it was right to award them with the property, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Eugenia Vilagra, followed by Paul Bates.
May I have one for Councilor O'Vry, and will you give Betsy one as well?
Thank you.
My name is Eugenia Vilagra, and I live at 76 Riverview Avenue in Groton. I am here tonight representing Groton Conservation Advocates, and we would like to say a few words about the Groton-Noank Community Park and Garden Project. Let me begin by saying how much we appreciate the town council's decision on February 26 to postpone the recommendation to rescind the guiding document until April 23 to give the task force an opportunity to raise funds for the pavilion. Several of us at GCA have nonprofit fundraising experience with local, state, national foundations, and we are concerned that this timeframe is unrealistic. Grantor organizations take many months to process grant applications, and the task force will need to raise big bucks as well as smaller donations to raise $50,000. In addition, we believe it is important that the town council uphold the terms of the 2017 guiding document, which extended the use of the land by the task force until 2021. It sets a bad precedent for one council to overturn agreements made by a previous council, except in the most egregious of circumstances. The town should not only honor the agreement, but also participate fully in it in consultation with the appropriate departments and by setting realistic benchmarks along the way. If the task force has failed to realize the goals they have set out for the park and garden when the guiding document expires in 2021, at that time, we agree that an alternative plan is appropriate and fair. The town should not attempt to sell the school property until an alternatives analysis of the highest and best use of the property is completed. This analysis should take into consideration not only the economic impact of additional single-family housing on the town, in other words, would it be a tax generation, generator or a tax burden in the long term?
One minute.
But the social quality of life impact. This analysis should be done for each of the four school properties, Noank, Butler, Claude Chester, and Pleasant Valley, potentially being sold. After the study is complete, bring in all stakeholders for a charrette process. If the people want community gardens on a portion of the school lands, why not support them? These gardens are good for people and the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vilagra. Paul Bates, and then, I'm sorry, but I can't read the last name, the first name is Marie.
Paul Bates, I live at 47 Church Street, I'm a mayor member of the council, town manager. I hope you all are aware of a study, very expensive study, that the town had done about eight, 10 years ago, when they hired a consultant to review all of the parks and wreck facilities in the town and rate them on their value and how they should compare to what we're supposed to have. In that report, they said the southeastern corner of Groton was lacking in public recreational facilities. We hear discussions about moving parks and wreck from the Spicer property in Noank to the old Fitz Junior High School in Groton, and I hope you all are also well-aware and have read and have a copy of the deed of gift from the Spicer family to the town for that property, which states quite clearly that if the town does not use it for parks and wrecks, it reverts to the Avalonia Land Trust, excuse me, the Nature Conservancy. The town will not, cannot sell that, would not receive any, and it certainly sounds like the southeastern corner of Groton is going to lose public open space and recreational facilities in the immediate future. If one draws a line along Elm Street from above Brook Street, goes down to Groton Long Point Road, goes up to Crosswinds, comes over the hill and comes back down to 215, you come up with about 190 acres, excluding the cemetery. The town's subdivision regulations require a developer to provide 10 percent of their property...
One minute.
...for open space. If you get rid of the Noank school property, you would be in violation of your own subdivision regulations, and I think you would find any developer that came in would hold you to it, and by the time you get to the Supreme Court that we have these days, you would lose boldly. It's rather ironic that we're sitting here on another property that the Spicer family gave to the town as the poor farm, which the town then ran into the ground, destroyed, abandoned the use, and then again was taken to court and was required to give up $350,000 because they reneged on that deal as well. Please support the current use and the open space use and the public use of this property. There are numerous studies that will tell you that residential housing is a financial loser for the town, and as we've seen just in ledger...
Your time is up, sir.
Not too long ago, they had to, their 55 and over housing was a bust, and they had to go back and get a change back to regular...
Thank you, Mr. Bates.
Thank you.
Again, the first name is Marie, but I cannot read the last name, I apologize. Okay, Bruce Flax, followed by Zell Stever.
A couple of things.
Name and address, please.
Oh, Bruce Flax, 632 Noank Road. I'm here in support for the Groton-Noank Community Park and Gardens. The town of Groton is what the town of Groton is. As everyone knows, we have three subdivisions, as well as the Village of Noank. Like the subdivisions, Noank has its own zoning commission. This is an important item that needs to be in the forefront of the discussion. The Noank Zoning Commission essentially controls that parcel of land. As anything that will be proposed as development, we'll need to go get Noank zoning approval. I'm not knocking this, they should have their own zoning, as the subdivisions do, but it is an important piece of information that will direct the development there. In the council discussions, there's, there has not been any mention of the Noank School Reuse Task Force, nor has the town clerk, I believe, brought it to the councillor, council's attention. The Noank School Reuse Task Force was established in 2011, was made up of citizens of the town, including Noank, town employees, representatives from planning and zoning, and a town councillor. The last four councils have had, I'm sorry, we met for over a year, we put a survey out there, which I have brought for you to look at, and then we presented to the council. The last four councils have had involvement in this process to give the Noank Gardens Group life. It has been unfortunate that this council has not taken the time to discover the history of this parcel of land, at least that I can, that I've seen in the discussions, based on the comments that have been made. The mayor had mentioned that she had heard from other Groton residents who want their closed school to become a garden as well, and she compared those potential situations to Noank. She pointed out that decisions need to be made thinking about the entire town, not just Noank. I couldn't agree more. But the one difference between those schools and the Noank school is Noank zoning. Most of the other schools fall under town zoning. One exception is Groton Heights. While town planning are working towards developing Groton Heights, they must go through city zoning to be approved, just like Noank. The mayor said last week, "We, as a council, have not had any say in what happens to this parcel." It seemed to me she was saying...
One minute.
...that prior councils did not do the right thing. This garden and parcel of land has a long history. The people who have worked for this parcel, from the reuse committee to most recently and especially the Groton-Noank Garden Task Force, deserve your respect, and in the presentation, they certainly were not treated respectfully. Prior councils, some led by Republicans, some by Democrats, have all participated in this journey. It would behoove this council to seek all information regarding the entire history to date, and it appears to me that is something they have not done. I appreciate the council agreeing to extend the deadline before they make a decision. Please, please, before you clarify your vision for this parcel, look back at the history and how it got to this point. Speak to the people involved and then move forward. You may find that what is being presented is what is best for the property and the town. In my last 10 seconds, I think it's shameful of this council to give the beat-down to the citizens and limiting it to three minutes. It may be a rule that you created, but I appreciate councils of Perry and Baumgartner voting against it. Everyone came here to speak, they have a right to speak, and in the last 10 years, I'm aware of, we've never limited, the council has never limited the amount of speaking time for people, regardless of how many people...
Your time is up, Mr. Flax, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We still have more speakers. We ask for your, I can co-order, please be polite, Mr. Stever, and then we will take any other people that are coming into the room.
Good evening, mayor, town manager, town clerk, councilors. I'm Zell Stever, I live at 81 Main Street in Groton, and I'm here to talk about a different subject, maybe some relief. I'm here to support a resolution that you're going to look at tonight in creating the Groton Resiliency and Sustainable Task Force. I think this is a very critical item for the town to develop a task force to do this, and I wholeheartedly support your effort to do this. As some of you may know, I was on two former task forces in the community, and I think this would be a terrific extension going on to the, on into the future, and this really has to do with how do we in Groton survive over the next 100 years in a way that will our children and our grandchildren will, will make this place a better place to live in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stever. That's everyone who signed up, but I did notice a couple people come in after we had started with the petitions. So is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Yes, Ms. Surf.
My name is Janavee Surf, I live at 60 Hillside Avenue. Good evening, councilors and friends. I apologize a little bit in advance, I just went into L and M with 103 fever yesterday, came out this afternoon at 4:00, went home to write this, and came over here because I feel this is so important. I have, some of you know me, some of you don't, I have a PhD in electrical engineering. I worked for Verizon for 23 years as an analyst, system analyst, and I worked in AI. I served three terms on the RTM, where I cut my teeth on public service with Patrice as the whip for the Democrats, Democrats in RTM, and I served one term on the RTM almost and had to resign, and Patrice took my place, so we go back ways. I'm a current member of the Noank Task Force, because when I moved out of Groton Long Point and moved into Noank, where I currently rent right on the corner of Hillside and Williams, Clint Wright asked me to join the task force in order to help with the council, help plead their cause. At the same time, I had gotten a call from Heather Summers telling me that she, this is our state senator, Heather's always been a good friend and a supporter of the gardens, and she called me to say, "Jen, you've got to help. The council, the previous council, is very upset with the task force already two years ago, that they're not doing enough, and you need to jump in and do something." So I started working with them on a limited basis. September came around, and I had gone to this community gardens, annual community, was it, the U.S. Community Gardens Association Conference, and I came out of there a convert. The community gardens, there are 18,000 of them in this country, there are 600 alone in New York City. They're in very densely populated cities, they're all over the place...
One minute.
One minute?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, community, okay, so I'll just cut to the chase here. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilor Franco in particular for doing the research that she did. Everything that she said two weeks ago is accurate. This task force has not been running properly. I am incredibly frustrated by that and have been since I've been on the task force, in spite of my passion for this Noank Gardens. When I voted, I don't know how many times, I was a swing vote for the Noank Gardens on adopting the property as a public space, on having the taxpayers pay for having the school torn down, and on letting this task force take it over. And I am being maligned by these very same people for the same reason that Councilor Franco was maligned, because I told them they weren't running the show the way they should. They should be running it in a businesslike fashion. I'm an enormous believer in community gardens, I'm an enormous believer in having a garden in this space, because I think it could serve the...
Your time is up, ma'am.
It could serve the Groton community. Wait, one more thing, but there absolutely has to be a change of leadership if it's going to succeed in the next three months, and I suggest you, as a council member or members of the conservation community, I suggest you do not give them the extra three months unless you add some people who know how to run a meeting...
Your time is up, ma'am.
...and who have experience in public service and experience in volunteer...
Are there other members of the public who would speak?
No, that's why you can give me an extra second. Came out of the hospital to say this, Patrice.
I appreciate that, Jen.
The main thing is, I want this garden to succeed, but it cannot succeed without a complete change in leadership.
Thank you.
And the way they do business.
Thank you, take care. If you could state your name and address, because I need to record it, please.
Yep, my name is Morgan Vale, and I live at 64 Washington Street in Mystic...
Can you spell Vale, please?
V A I L.
Thank you, and what was the address?
64 Washington Street.
Thank you.
Mystic, Connecticut. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak this evening. I am in full support of the Noank-Groton All-Inclusive Garden and Park. I do not otherwise have the means to shop for non-GMO, very clean vegetables, produce in general. I really appreciate the space, not only for its beauty, but its community that I have shared and met people and really enjoyed myself. So I agree with pro-garden speakers before me, and I think it's shameful that we are even discussing this as a matter of public concern, whether to make a pretty penny or come together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vale. Hello.
Hello, my name is Joel Ryan, I live at 251 Thames Street, Groton.
Ryan?
Yes, R Y A N.
251 Thames?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I was just coming up to say that I am in support of the Groton Community Park and Garden, and I believe that open spaces are important for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is everyone again, so last call for speakers. So, having said that, we are at the point of the meeting where we have responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. So are there any councilors who would like to respond? Counselor Atwater, if we could please have quiet while the meeting is going on? Thank you, Counselor Atwater.
I have a question for Dr. Johnson. Is my microphone up?
There you go, now it is.
A question for Dr. Johnson, and I'm quickly looking at the recent handouts and so forth. I recall when you came to us and made your presentation, that you said you would do your fundraising by April 2nd or April 3rd, as I recall? fundraising by April 2nd or April 3rd, as I recall?
Thank you for your question, councillor. The initial documents showed the initial fundraising for the pavilion ending March 25th, and then the fundraising was to continue for the duration of the project. With the extension that we got with-
I'm sorry, the extension was an extension or a postponement to a specified date on my motion. It had nothing to do with the agreement that you came to us and presented to us as far as what you were going to do, and I just want to clarify that.
The original plan had a deadline date for March 25th for the fundraising.
For raising the-
For the pavilion.
For raising the $50,000.
Correct.
Okay, and so there's been no extension on our part, that I understand, of that date, is that correct?
That's correct, except for the date that you extended with-
But the April 23rd date was an extension or a postponement to a specified date of my motion to terminate the agreement. It had nothing to do with extending the plan that you presented to us, not something that we gave to you.
If I recall correctly, councillor, Councilor Zepiri recommended a change to the date, extending the date to April 23rd to allow us to have more time for fundraising. Is that not correct, Councilor Zepiri?
No, I had asked the council to extend the date of considering the rescinding of your authorization to use that land to April 23rd. We were expecting, I had the expectation that you were going to complete your fundraising by April 4th. But frankly, if you come in on April 23rd and say, "We've got the money, we can do this," I would support you to continue. I'm not sure about the rest of the council, I can't speak for the council, but I think this is a moot point. The point is, the point that we were making when we discussed this with you before is that you had, that your commission has had this property for four years, and the property is in terrible shape, and even the gardens, the little patchy gardens, look awful. It doesn't look like the people that have them are using them. So I think the point is-
Excuse me, Councilor Zepiri. In this portion, we're only supposed to be asking questions to clarify their presentations.
Okay.
So we shouldn't be debating the public at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not debating, I just wanted to correct, to correct his misconception. That's where we stand with this. We'd like to see you get your feet under you and get it going.
Councilor Atwater, is your question answered?
My question is answered, yes.
Thank you. Are there any other responses to citizens' petitions? Councilor Baumgardner.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out here to express your concerns regarding the garden. It's very clear that there are many folks, not just within the Noank community, but also the greater Groton community, that support having open spaces in Groton in all forms, whether it's protected open space or parks that folks can frequent. I think the council, and certainly the town, should heed the advice given tonight, that there should be more information relevant to the task force on the website that can be easily accessible to all folks. And I also believe there was a comment made about an analysis done on existing properties, and not just to take a look at the economic development, the value of each property, but also looking at, you know, alternative uses that could enhance, could enhance the quality of life, as well as the environmental value of each site. So again, they're not mutually exclusive, enhancing economic development here in town and preserving our parks and recreational open spaces. So again, thank you for coming out, and I certainly agree with Councilor Zepiri that when it comes to public comments, period, that we should value the time that is dedicated within our, you know, within our rules to allow you to speak for that five-minute period. So with that, again, thank you for coming out.
Councilor Franco.
I would just like to clarify, our motion that we were going to be voting on before we were postponed was removal of the task force that's currently stewards of the land. We had no, it didn't state what we were going to do with the land, other than send it to a committee to investigate what would be the best use of it. So the proposal that was on the table was rescinding this stewardship of this task force, and even in the comment section, it had stated that we would be, always want to have a garden and a park area for that site, regardless of what was proposed by the committee. So I just wanted to clarify, the gardens weren't going to be taken away as a whole, and there was, all the park wasn't going to be sold, or that wasn't even on the agenda there. It was simply to rescind this task force stewardship of the land. Thank you.
Councilor Schmidt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask Paul Bates if he would clarify the deed restrictions on the property.
On the Spicer House?
No, I thought you said it was on the Noank. Is it just the Spicer House?
It was the Spicer House.
Oh.
Could you, could you come to the microphone, please, sir, that way they can capture it for the people watching at home? Thank you.
When the Spicer family gave the Spicer House property on Spicer Avenue to the town?
Right, I knew about that restriction, but I thought you intimated that there was a restriction on the Noank property.
No, ma'am.
No. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Anybody else? Councilor Parker?
I'd like to thank, can you guys all hear me? Thank you all for coming out and voicing your concerns, and we will all take this into consideration. Many of you said it's open to all of Groton, and then stated that you would like it to be on our website, but we also have to have the information to be able to put it on the website. And so if we can come up together and find the best way of having the information out there, if is the council's decision to move forward, but like was previously stated, it was just the stewardship, not the whole garden being taken away. So whatever you guys can do, we'll figure it out together as a group, as a whole of Groton, not just one section of town. We have to do, we're the stewards of all of Groton, and we all have a responsibility to everyone in Groton to figure out the best way so we're not raising taxes or anything else, so everyone can have a good living conditions.
Councilor Zepiri.
I would like to thank everyone for coming out also today. I learned some things that I didn't know before and had some other thoughts reinforced. I think we do need open space more in the southeastern part of Groton, and that, the Noank Gardens, if it develops into a park, as they had proposed it will, would provide that. But I also think that the current trust has not developed it well at all. And I'd like to see the leadership get a chance to get some traction beneath them. I know that every new effort takes time to get going, and after it does get going, it can accomplish great things. I'm still hopeful for that for you, but I just, I just think that open spaces are prime, and I think they increase the value of surrounding property, and that would add to our grand list as well. So I don't think we should hasten to close that property, and I mean to sell it off for development, but I think the folks that have it have to hasten to develop it as a park.
Councilor Heath?
Also, I want to thank everybody, everybody for coming out. I also value open space. The immediate issue that we have here is not the open space or the public garden, though. The immediate issue is the success of the group that's running it right now, and that's what we're dealing with at this moment. So it remains my opinion that I don't have a whole lot of confidence, based on what I've seen over the last four years, and, but that doesn't mean I don't want to work with the neighborhood to find out something that everybody in the neighborhood and in the town can, can live with.
And I'll just reiterate, thank you all for coming out, and thank you for all your comments that you've emailed and the phone calls that we've received as well. We have heard from other people that are not with us this evening, but they've expressed their opinion on both sides of the issue. So thank you very much for your time. We are on to Room numeral seven, consent calendar. Councilor Baumgardner?
Councilor, we have a recess.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a request for a recess, so we will recess for five minutes. We will return at 8:19, please. Thank you. Session at 8:26. We are on to item number, Room numeral seven, consent calendar. Councilor Baumgardner?
I'd like to move the consent calendar, and that would be item 2019-155, the February 5th, 2019 Town Council Minutes. Item 2019-158, special trust funds on February, and 2019-129-1, various appointments and reappointments. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Baumgardner and seconded by Schmidt. Are there any comments on the consent calendar items? Councilor Zepiri?
Just on the minutes of the meeting, if we go to page 12, I think it's on 12.
The block grant?
We have, it's just the same old story. I'm trying to get us to do, record votes as, as they are, pardon me. I'll put a tab on it so I can find it easier, it's not helping.
So the concern is the same as the one you voiced last time, as far as the vote being recorded?
Right, page 16.
16?
Yeah, it's item X11, 424-1, Sister Cities.
I see.
Again, the vote is, motion carries, 5300, opposed, Atwater, Franco, and Zepiri. I'm not sure, I did not oppose this, first of all, but I think it should be recorded in the same fashion, record all other votes.
So you need to have the vote checked on that particular item?
Yes.
And that is Room numeral X11, 1011, 2018, 4241, Sister Cities, and Councilor Zepiri's requesting that the vote be checked and recorded in the same format as the rest of votes.
Yes.
You did not vote against it.
Excuse me?
You did not vote against it.
And you did not vote against it?
That's correct, I voted for it. I was a, I was a proponent for that.
Proponent of what?
Of our developing Sister Cities.
The motion says it was to postpone any action.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I did vote against postponement.
But you still want the vote recorded in a different format?
I want the vote recorded as we record all votes.
Thank you.
And I think we should make it a point that that's the only way we record votes.
The standard.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Comments, concerns on any of the consent calendar items? Councilor Franco?
I would like to clarify on page 10.
Page 10.
X2, the results, can I get the results of that?
The results, I'm sorry?
X2, one town manager was asked to check with the attorney. We've never found the results of that. I was just wondering if you can get the results, because it's here in the minutes.
About the local meeting.
Mr. Bur?
It was awarded to the little bidder, and I did put it in my weekly report to the town council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Or maybe this is a re- I forget one or the other.
Councilor Franco, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I couldn't put something into the minutes that weren't there, though.
No, I just wanted to clarify, since I didn't want to debate about it next week. I don't know how to go by. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the consent calendar items? Seeing none, we'll vote on accepting the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are eight councilors. Communications and reports, 8A, town councilors. Councilor Baumgardner?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Parker?
Just receiving the emails regarding opposing or in favor of Noank Garden, and thank you, 31, for emailing us.
Councilor Franco?
I too received many emails and correspondence and phone calls regarding the Noank Garden issue, and I also had a beautification committee meeting, and I would like to announce that we're doing a Groton Cleanup Day on April 27th from 9:00 to noon in all different parts of Groton, and we're going to be meeting at the library. And if you want to look up Groton Beautification on Facebook, you can see the event. I'm actually in a creative event, but it's a post-up right now.
So if they're not on Facebook, they should contact the manager's office for information on how to participate? Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. Sure. Thank you. Councilor Heath?
I also received a number of communications, emails, phone call, face-to-face over the Groton-Noank Public School property, as varied as the opinions expressed tonight. I received a couple of emails from RTM representative, he's sitting right there, I know him.
Wells?
Gary Wells. I'm so sorry. About the Groton Long Point Bridge. So I've requested a copy of a report which, which town manager has sent me. In addition, I wanted to follow up on an issue, and I forgot to print it up before I came in today, but there's a woman in town who's had an issue with her neighbor, something about a renovation. I'll forward it to you, though, John, and you can follow up for me. Finally, last thing, Alicia Bauer has resigned from the RTM. She's been involved with the RTM since 2005. She assumed a vacancy and then ran for reelection every year after that, so she has, she's growing older and she can no longer serve on the RTM, so she's had to resign.
Let me thank her for her service.
Yes, we do.
I apologize. Can I hand in some of the letters I received into the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Councilor Heath?
A man.
Councilor Atwater?
I yield my time to Councilor Schmidt.
Councilor Schmidt?
Thank you, and I also received the emails for pro and against Noank school gardens, and I had a meeting with the conservation advocates, and that was it.
Councilor Zepiri?
I've received the same emails, although I have no report.
Thank you. We all, I think, received the same emails, and we all had individual conversations with our neighbors and friends regarding that particular issue. Thank Representative Bauer for her service. Councilor Parker and I represented the council at Reebok America at Kalnaski School, that was a lot of fun. And I will be bringing something to the council on March 26th. I hope to have Wendy Berry from the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition here. I'm hoping that you all will be favorable to participating in Make Music Day. It's an international event, and I'm hoping we can do something here in Groton. So I'll be bringing that on the 26th of March. Thank you very much.
Clerk of the representative town meeting?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you've heard, that we have some vacancies on the RTM. We have three vacancies. We have a District 1 vacancy, District 3 a vacancy, and District 4 a vacancy, and I've heard rumor that we have someone coming in for District 3.
Three, possibly one.
And possibly one, excellent. Also, the next RTM meeting will be next Wednesday, that would be the 13th of March. They meet at 7:30 at the Groton Senior Center. They do have citizens' petitions at the beginning of their meeting, and they do have two items that they'll be reporting on from subcommittees. They also have formed an outreach committee that is meeting regularly, that is designed to enhance the recognition of the representative town meeting.
Very good. Clerk of the council?
Clerk of the council. Council will tell you that you are cordially invited to participate in the Mystic St. Patrick Day Parade along with the RTM, and you should have received an invitation. Also, you probably got an email today from Jerry Locken about the Fourth of July Parade coming up, so that's also news for you. I also wanted to report that we, or I administered the oath of office for our new assistant animal control officer today, Ms. Officer Carey, and she actually had worked for the animal control previously, and now she's back.
Very good, thank you. Town manager?
Just trying to get the budget wrapped up this week. The numbers are all done now, it's just the narrative. I thought I had to Friday, but Cindy's cracking the whip, so she wants it tomorrow, so I'm going to sequester myself for a while tomorrow. Other than that, I went with a group of local officials to meet with the governor yesterday in support of our tribes and concerning the MGM casino and, you know, potential one in Bridgeport, so it was a good meeting and very positive with the governor. That's it.
Very good, thank you. Do we have any department heads? Anything to report? No, nothing from the superintendent. Committee reports, I have nothing to report out of the committee, the full personnel appointments, Chairman Heed?
Nothing to report, other than we'll be voting tonight on the personnel policy, because we've already discussed it.
Thank you.
And I'm sure it's not done, it's a work in progress.
Very good.
Is everything.
Temporary rules and rules, Chairman Heed?
We have not yet met.
Thank you. And there's no public safety, so we are on to new business. We are on to room number 10A, 2019-101-1, Merit Quit Claim Deed, and this is on page 21. We have Counselor Parker, I believe you were correct.
Resolution authorizing the town manager to execute a quit claim deed to merge two properties required for the construction of the Groton Middle School, whereas the site selected for the construction of the Groton Middle School consists to two parcels, and whereas the site plan approved by the Town Planning Commission on December 11, 2018, requires that the two parcels, PIN 260809176052E and PIN 260809248086264808E, be consolidated and merged, and whereas the town attorney has prepared a quit claim deed for the town manager to execute, resolve that the town council authorize the John Burke Town Manager to execute the quit claim deed and file such deed, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Zepiri. Any discussion on the quit claim deed?
We didn't do this in our office, but we have Lisa correct some typos.
Okay.
And some grammatical errors there.
Very good, thank you. Is there any discussion on the item itself?
Don't worry, I fixed them.
Didn't.
That was good.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2019-101 Merit Quit Claim Deed say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously. One second. I've got multiple copies of these things, one second together, together. We are on to 2018-424-3, Sister Cities, and this is on page 22. Counselor Franco, please.
Resolution to approve letters of invitation to be a sister city, whereas the town council recognizes the advantages of creating a relationship with Haifa, Israel, and Kingston, Jamaica, and whereas the City of New London has already expressed interest in becoming a sister city with Kingston and Haifa, and has expressed interest in partnering with the Town of Groton for such endeavor, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes the town manager to send a letter of invitation via the respective consulates in Boston to Haifa, Israel, and to Kingston, Jamaica, to become a sister city with the Town of Groton, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. Is there discussion on this item? Counselor Heed?
Just been poking around the SisterCities.org website, and it's actually a really interesting program, it's kind of fun, so I think it, you know, it's great to partner with New London and the Port Authority to make this happen, so I think it's something that will grow, it, I think is very exciting. That's it.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2018-424, Sister Cities, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. We are on to 2018-38-2, 2019 Golf Rates, on page 23, please. Counselor Heed?
Resolution setting 2019 rates for the Shenandoah Athletic Golf Course, whereas the Golf Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission have endorsed changes to the fees and membership rates for the Shenandoah Athletic Golf Course for 2019, and whereas recommendations include a decrease in adult memberships and the creation of an associate and associate-plus membership, and a change in the time that limited memberships may play from 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m., now therefore be it resolved that the municipal golf course rates for 2019 shall be the rates as attached to this resolution, I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker, is there discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2018-38, 2019 Golf Rates, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. 2019-104-1, Endorsement of State Greenway Designation, on page 24. Counselor Atwater, please.
Resolution, excuse me, authorizing the endorsement for the state greenway nomination, whereas the Great Brook Mystic River and Fishtown Brook Greenway will provide benefits to the community, including defining natural features such as waterways connecting existing protected areas, provide access to the outdoors. In addition, it will expand recreation opportunities and encourage alternative transportation, and whereas the Town of Groton's 2016 Plan of Conservation Development, POCD, recommends the development of the townwide and intertown network of trails, and furthermore recommends and encourages integrated and linked open space to reduce the pattern of fragmentation, therefore be it resolved that the Town of, the Groton Town Council supports the concept of working to enhance and encourage open space connections by endorsing the nomination of the Great Brook Mystic River and Fishtown Brook Greenway, and furthermore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council authorizes the town manager to submit, on behalf of the Town of Groton, an endorsement for the greenway nomination to the Connecticut Greenways Council, I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt, is there discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2019-104, Endorsement of State Greenway Designation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2019-32-1, TIF Master Plan Downtown Route 1, on page 25. Counselor Schmidt, please.
Resolution to refer the downtown Groton Tax Increment Financing Plan to the Planning Commission and to set a public hearing date for said plan, whereas the Town of Groton has completed a townwide market analysis with a recommendation to research and implement tax increment financing in Groton, and whereas TIF is used to invest in economic development by allowing some or all of public sector private costs associated with the development to be financed over time by increases to the property tax revenues that are generated by the new development, and whereas the TIF district will contribute to the economic growth and well-being of Groton, and whereas the Town of Groton adopted a tax increment financing policy on March 6, 2018, which outlines the process of planning for, reviewing, approving, and implementing the TIF districts, and whereas the Tax Increment Financing Advisory Committee recommends passing the TIF Downtown Groton Master Plan, and whereas the Economic Development Commission recommends passing the Downtown Route 1 TIF Direct Master Plan, and whereas the Town Council, in accordance with Chapter 105B of the Connecticut General Statutes, the state shall refer the Downtown Route 1 TIF District Master Plan to the Planning Commission to determine the plan's consistency with the Groton Plan of Conservation and Development, and whereas the Tax Increment Financing Plan will be a new economic development tool to encourage development and redevelopment in planned targeted areas in Groton, and now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council hereby refers the Downtown Route 1 TIF District Master Plan to the Planning Commission, and will set the public hearing for the Town Council public hearing for the said plan on July 2, 2019, I so move.
Second. Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Atwater, any discussion on the TIF Master Plan Downtown Route 1? Counselor Baumgartner?
Got a quick question for the town manager, so after the public hearing process, what is the extent to the council's involvement with establishing the policy?
You know, I'd actually, it's been a while since I've read it, John's been the lead on this, so I don't want to misspeak, so let me get back to you on that.
Okay.
I'll send you an information tomorrow.
Right, thank you.
So any, any development agreements, of course, would come through the council, and that's key, that would have the real exact provisions of any agreement to move forward for work.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, call for a vote on 2019-32, TIF Master Plan Downtown Route 1, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. 2018-526-4, Town Property Sale, this is on page 91. And, yes, Counselors of Perry, I'm sorry.
Whereas the Town of Groton is the owner of real property, PIN number 260819714055, commonly referred to as the Noank Gardens, and whereas the town received a request from Christopher Drake, the co-owner of the neighboring property, to purchase a 0.168-acre portion of the Noank Gardens property. And whereas the legal description to be used for the potential sale is below, beginning at the southeasterly corner of herein described property, thence north 243414 east, along a 25-foot permanent right-of-way in favor of 66 and 70 Prospect Hill Road, 40.72 feet point to a point, thence north 1803-58 east, along land now or formerly of Archer G. and Jean C. Bryant, 30 feet, to a point thence north 715602 west, along land now or formerly owned by the Town of Groton, formerly Noank Elementary School, 70 feet to a point thence south 60-3552 west, again along land now formerly owned by the Town of Groton, formerly Noank Elementary School, 104.61 feet, to a point thence south 744333 east, along property currently owned by Christopher H. Drake and Billy Joe Abbiati, 136.27 feet to the point in place of, beginning, the proposed boundary line on the northwestern side of the herein described property being wholly located southeast of existing fence line. The grantee herein shall have no rights to remove and/or obligation to maintain said existing fence. The above described property contains approximately 0.168 acres, whereas the Town Council held a public hearing per state statute 7-163E for the sale of real property owned by the town on Wednesday, January 2, at 6:30 p.m., and whereas the property proposed for sale was appraised at $1,684.50, and whereas the town did not incur certain other costs, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council authorizes the sale of 0.168 acres to Christopher Drake and Billy Joe Abbiati for the price of $2,500, and be it further resolved that the town manager is authorized to sign any necessary documents to effectuate the sale, and be it further resolved that the proceeds of the sale shall be placed in a new fund to be used for cleanup of nuisance properties.
I so.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Zepiri, seconded by Franco, is there discussion on this item? Counselors of Perry?
We have letters in opposition to this from the Planning and Zoning Commission and from the Open Space Conservation Commission, what is the second one? I'm concerned that we have, we have letters in opposition to this sale, there are good reasons to oppose it, and I think we should rethink this.
Any other discussion, Counselor Franco?
I believe when this first came, the second set of property, small adjacent property of a landowner came to us, we were under the impression that there really would be no real opposition, but since then, there has come some opposition. I think we told these owners they could go forward, and they put out money to have this taking place, but I would go forward with this, but I would like to make it so that, as a council, we just don't take anything else on until we fully resolve what should be done with the Noank property after this.
Any other comments? Counselor Heed?
Chairman speaking, separate from what's been said, you want to be careful selling off bits and pieces of property here and there, you set a precedent, and you do it for two people, then why not this person over here, why not that person over there? But it seemed like in this particular case, it was, it made a lot of sense to do it, and it didn't harm the value of the overall property, but I would agree that we should have a plan for all of our excess properties before moving to go any further on additional properties, if that makes sense.
Correct.
I also agree that we probably should not chisel away any more parcels of this, but the constituents have come to us early on, and there was no opposition originally to this item. I also think that we need to codify our policy in general, we have had, we have been following a certain process for sale of our property, but I do think, and Mr. Bird has been working on, he has a draft of excess property disposition that has a policy, and hopefully it includes some of our goals in it, so I don't know if you want to speak to that or not.
Yeah, we, there's a adopted policy, just says kind of a formal process, doesn't, in terms of the actual procedures for sale, we, I've added on to that, expanded on that, and right now John Reiner and Deb Jones are working on it to make it prettier and flow better. And then the mayor had sent some additional goals, things to potentially put in there, so they're looking at that, too. We anticipate having a draft in the next two weeks.
Thank you. No discussion? Counselor Baumgartner?
Where's this letter that Counselors of Perry is describing from?
It was distributed prior to the meeting, it's from the Conservation Commission, I believe we received it electronically, and it was also distributed this evening, I believe it was left on your place.
Ah, I see.
But we did receive it.
Well, this was, this is in the pack. The one concerning this is in the pack, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That was about the broader, the one that passed, that was about the broader property.
That's right, that's right, I apologize.
And to note, the garden group itself did, they recommended for the sale.
I think Mr. Johnson presented a letter to us.
And then Mr. Johnson also sent a letter in support, but the garden group themselves supported it.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. If there's no further discussion, Counselor Baumgartner, did you have something else?
One last question, so where's the town in terms of, in its process in completing the reuse study?
That's, well, it's going to be part of that policy, what we do, so two weeks, two weeks.
Counselors of Perry?
I was questioning the value of the land, 0.168 acres for $2,500, that seems like a very good deal. Are we getting the proper value for the land in the sale?
Mr. Bird?
Well, it's a certified appraiser, and if you look, it's basically, it's, half of it's a hill, like a really steep hill, with the fence, that's why I mentioned the fence at the top, it's not really part of the proper gardens property, it comes down steep, half of it's taken up by the hill, and then there's a little bit of space at the bottom, there's pictures of it in here.
I saw the pictures, I had a hard time.
Yeah, if you go in person, it's very steep, there's not a lot of groundland there.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on 2018-526-4, Town Property Sale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So seven in favor, one opposed, Zepiri, and zero abstentions, and we ask that that be recorded in the proper format, please.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we are on to 2018-261-2, Town Council Appointment Policy, and this is on page 98. This is, I believe, back to Counselor Baumgartner.
Shuffling through to agenda. Shuffling through to agenda. Make a motion that we approve the resolution approving a revised town council appointment policy for boards and commissions, whereas the town council appointments policy was last revised effective November twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen, and whereas the personnel and appointments committee and committee of the whole of the town council have considered a revision to the policy, now therefore be it resolved that the town council adopts the town council appointments policy as amended said policy to be effective immediately. I submit.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Heed. Councilor Heed, did you want to address this at all?
Uh, no. I'm upset.
You're good, okay. Is there any discussion on this? Councilor Heed has drafted this and corrected errors and redrafted it, and he's put a lot of time and energy into this, and we thank you for your efforts for taking care of that for us. And he's also worked with the two town committees in order to get the approval and consulted the chairs of the various A.D.C., so...
Not all of them, but most of them.
Thank you again. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of twenty eighteen two six one dash two town council appointment policy say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And I'm going to read twenty nineteen one forty dash one Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force.
Resolution establishing a Groton Resilience, sorry, Sustainability Task Force, whereas the town of Groton finds the need to increase the resilience of Groton's vulnerable coast and inland waterways and to continue pursuing sustainability, and whereas the town of Gro- the town has determined a Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force is the best instrument for pursuing this endeavor, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the creation of the Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, and further be it resolved, further resolved, that the task force shall have the following parameters. One, develop and deploy natural science engineering...
Excuse me, I think you don't have the third book.
Oh, am I reading the wrong one?
Yeah. There's an updated one that came in the new packet. There were some changes made.
Yep, I apologize.
That's okay.
Let me read that. That was the one, the second page we got this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me read. I'll start from the beginning, I apologize. Resolution establishing Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, whereas the town of Groton finds the need to increase the resilience of Groton's vulnerable coast and inland waterways and to continue pursuing sustainability, and whereas the town has determined a Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force is the best instrument for pursuing this endeavor, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the creation of the Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, and be it further resolved that the task force shall include but not limited to the following parameters. Develop natural science, engineering, legal, financial, social, and policy best practices for climate and resilience and sustainability. Recommend pilot projects designed to improve resilience of the natural and built environment along Groton's coast and inland waterways. Create a resilience and sustainability literature public that understands its vulnerabilities and which uses that knowledge to make scientifically informed environmentally sound decisions. Foster resilient and sustainable Groton that can adopt to the impacts and hazards of climate change and reduce the loss of life and property, natural system and ecological damage and social disruption from high-impact events. Receive and act upon other referrals from the town council related to environment resiliency and sustainability. Provide quarterly updates to the town council at council meetings. Provide an annual report of recommendations. Further resolve that the task force will be made up of five voting members appointed by the town council mayor, including the chair selected by the mayor, to a two-year term, and be it further resolved that no town staff will be assigned to the task force, and be it further resolved that the task force shall appoint a secretary among their members to take and file minutes and complaints with the Freedom of Information Act. I so move.
I second that. Okay. Moved by Parker and seconded by Granatowski. Any discussion? Councilor Baumgartner.
So first and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge our mayor for bringing this resolution forward. I think it's a big step in the history of Groton. We're recognizing that climate change is something that our community has to confront immediately, and it will impact our future residents, and most certainly current residents. Our coastlines are incredibly, incredibly vulnerable to rising sea levels, as we've seen with past storms and hurricanes. One really bad hurricane or storm can cause havoc to many of our neighborhoods and communities. So, again, commend the mayor for her work on this and work with the council, and look forward to seeing the work of the task force. And I think the fact that having, you know, so many folks here in Groton from the academic world, as well as the, you know, as well as folks who have technical experience working on issues relating to resiliency and climate change, I think it's a good problem that we have so many people to consider. So, I think that's very unique to Groton, and even, even, you know, folks who aren't involved, I hope they get involved and testify before this task force and, and, yes, so. I do have a question, though, actually, for a fellow council member. I know Counselor Schmidt, in times past, have, you've been a part of the former Energy Committee, and I wasn't sure if there could be any, and that committee was done away with, and I wasn't sure if there were many, any ideas or proposals that the Energy Committee, Commission, or Committee made that could be beneficial to this task force moving forward.
Counselor Schmidt?
Well, I think that our, our group did work with the energy situation, and although certainly the two can be related, I don't think there was anything specific that we came up with that related to resiliency.
So, when, when I drafted this, I inserted item five, that the task force will act upon other referrals from the town council related to the environment, resiliency, and sustainability. So I tried to leave it open so that if something like that comes up, it could be considered by the committee as well. And I don't know if there's any legacy documents out there that we could refer to. I know that Mr. Stever's here, and he served on a commission that ended in two thousand eleven, and I'm hoping that the new task force can pick up with that and take a look at that and use it as a basis to move forward. So there's a, you're correct, Councilor Baumgartner, there are a wealth of resources for us to draw upon, and really expert opinion that we could pull in, so I look forward to getting this off the ground. Madam Clerk?
I was just going to add that there's a great document, a guiding document, that the Energy and Sustainability Committee did present to the council, that absolutely, I'm sure that the town manager will, will provide to the new committee. It'll be helpful.
Great. Councilor Heed?
It says that there will be five members on here. I'm wondering if we'll have alternates also?
I hadn't considered alternates. I was going to leave it just at five, but I'm certainly, if you wanted to take that up, this is, it's a fluid thing, we can always adjust it later if we find it's not working Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of twenty nineteen one four zero Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I need a minute. We are on to item twenty nineteen one six eight, request to state legislature. Councilor Franco, this is on page twenty, it's in the new package, you have it in front of you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution requesting General Assembly to enact special legislation, March fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Resolve that the town request the General Assembly to enact special legislation validating the vote cast by the electors and voters of the town of Groton at referendum held December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Otherwise valid except for the failure to timely publish legal notice of said referendum invalidating all acts, votes, and proceeding of officers. Officials and representatives of the town on and after the date and said referendum pertaining to and reliance of said referendum vote, otherwise valid except for any such error. Further resolve that the mayor, the town manager, and other proper officers and officials of the town are hereby authorized to take such action as is necessary or desirable to implement such request to the town, to the General Assembly. Is it? I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. Is there any discussion on this item? So, I'll read the background briefly. The newspaper posting requirement for the December eleventh, twenty eighteen referendum concerning the bonding for the elementary schools was not met. Special legislation is being requested to allow the process to move forward without an additional referendum being held. We have two choices: we could adopt the resolution as proposed, or we can do nothing. Staff is recommending that we adopt alternative one, which is to vote in favor of the resolution presented this evening. Mr. Byrd, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just to mention, the bond council did prepare this resolution.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of twenty nineteen one six eight, request to state legislature, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And again, I need a minute, please. I make a motion to suspend the rules to add an item to agenda to discuss attorney-client communication involving statutory procedures governing elected officers. Is there a second? Second. Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Franco. All those in favor of suspending the rules for the said circumstances say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Councilor Heed?
Chair by move that the members of the town council, along with town manager John Byrd and town attorney Eileen Dugan, go into executive session pursuant to general statute section one dash two hundred six E. for the purpose of discussing matter which would result in the disclosure of public records or the information contained therein described of being an attorney-client communication involving statutory procedures governing elected officers. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed, seconded by Franco. Any discussion on the motion to go into executive session? Seeing none, all those in favor of going into executive session for said reasons say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So moved unanimously. We're in executive session at nine oh eight. Okay, we are out of executive session at ten ten. Seeing as it is after ten o'clock, in order to take up anything else, we need consensus to continue. So is there a consensus? I understand there are a couple of counselors who wanted to take some action, so is there consensus to move on? Any objection to moving on? Okay. So I have two counselors that wanted to, to speak. I'll let you two decide, Councilor Franco and Councilor Atwater. Councilor Franco?
I'm under other business. Do you want me to wait till then?
That's where we are.
Okay. I have a letter sent from the Mystic Chamber Foundation, Chris Regan, who is doing a fundraiser for tourism for Mystic, and he has asked for a donation, and I wanted to submit this so all the counselors can see it for the record. Thank you.
And Councilor Atwater?
I'd like to give notice that at the next meeting of the COW, I would like to make a motion to rescind Counselor Zepary's motion to postpone to a future date my motion of action on No Ink Public Gardens.
Can you repeat that, please?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't think so at this hour.
I just need to make sure they, they got it.
I would like to give notice, for the next meeting of the COW, I would like to discuss a rescission of Counselor Zepary's motion to postpone my motion to a future date of April twenty-third.
Is everybody clear? One moment, please. Notice rescind Counselor Zepary's motion...
Motion to...
Postpone?
Postpone my motion to...
Postpone your motion?
A date specified or a future date, whatever.
Okay. Madam Clerk, did you get that?
I understand.
Okay. So I don't have to write it? Yes.
So would that then, would I go and put that on, you know, No Ink Gardens as an agenda topic?
Not unless it passes. You have to suspend your rules and put it out.
The other thing is...
Are we, are we clear on what counselor? One moment, please.
He's saying, he's saying that at the next meeting, he plans to, he's announcing that he's going to make a motion to rescind...
So everybody understands it?
A motion that he previously voted for.
So...
And he voted against.
No, no, I, I'm making a motion to rescind a motion...
Don't you have to be...
You're giving notice.
Giving notice, that I will, at the next meeting, I will make a motion to rescind a motion that was passed.
Yeah.
Do you, I understand where you're going with this, Madam Clerk, that you have to be on the, do, I don't know if that applies. Do you have to be on the affirmative side?
Right.
The motion that carried, was that your point of order?
Yeah. Point of order is that he's essentially making a motion to reconsider a prior motion.
From President Roberts' rules.
In order to do that, you have to be, to make that motion to reconsider, you have to be one of the people who voted for it.
Voted in favor, is correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So, actually, you can't make such a motion.
He can rescind, I think. I think it's reconsider.
Well, rescind or reconsider, it's both the same, according to reconsider or to rescind.
Reconsider can only be done in the same meeting.
But this, he said rescind, he didn't say...
But he is, because he's announcing that you can do a rescind, but he still have to...
Eric Callahan had looked at it, and he said he could do a motion to rescind at the next COW.
I moved to rescind. Yeah, well, if Eric said it, I think he should know it.
But I'm guessing that Eric didn't know that I voted against the original motion.
Oh, here we go.
It's something, and then something previously adopted.
On page three oh seven of the Big Roberts Rules. Write of any member to make the motions without time limit. In contrast to the case of the motion to reconsider, there's no time limit on making these motions after the adoption of the measure, and they can be moved by any member regardless of how he voted on the original question. When previous notice has been given, it is usual to wait for the member who gave notice of these motions to move them, but if he does not, any member can do so. So this is line twenty-two on page three oh seven. Are we in the same edition? I'm in the eleventh edition.
You're in the eleventh.
So this is section thirty-five, rescind amend something previously adopted for the rules and explanations. Write of any member to make the motions without time limit, and it's in the same paragraph that's discussing the time limit. Do you see it?
My book has the same, I have a different book here, but they have that, too.
Okay.
But I would, I would say that it makes sense to be from previous discussions, because it's, you're giving notice prior.
Right. So this, according to what...
I'm giving notice.
Okay, according to what we're, we're seeing in Roberts' rules, it doesn't matter what side Counselor Atwater was on.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Obviously, he has some good reason for it, though.
Okay. Well, he can talk about that at the next meeting, then. All right, so, were there, did you have something else you wanted to add? Councilor Heed, did you have something else you wanted to add? Anyone else? We are still under other business. Councilor Baumgartner. Almost called you Counselor Andre.
It's okay. So, I think a couple of weeks ago, we talked, I brought up about maybe proposing an ordinance regarding apprenticeship programs or labor, especially associated with, let's say, the school project or various other construction projects. So, I'd like to bring up a subject matter, a subject matter item discussion that we could, that could potentially turn into an ordinance, dealing with apprenticeships in particular, and also just some of the ordinances we have on the books that will deal with issues of oversight during the construction projects. So, that would include issues such as wage theft, as well as ordinances relating to our, again, our contracting and apprenticeship programs.
So are you making a referral?
Yes.
To the COW?
To the COW.
And can you very succinctly state what the subject is for clerk, clerk, staff, and manager, please?
So it may be appropriate to do two separate referrals. One would be regarding a, regarding apprenticeships. Apprenticeships on municipal... Apprenticeships on municipal building projects.
Okay.
And the other would be wage, a subject matter, I'm sorry, to discuss a wage theft ordinance.
Okay. Are we, Mr. Burt, are we clear with what Counselor Baumgartner is asking for the referral on?
I believe so.
Okay, very good.
And in, as, over the next few weeks, love to talk to other fellow counselors on some of the ideas I've had. I know in the past, you know, we, I've had conversations with Counselor Franco as well, would also like to work with Town Manager as well, fleshing out kind of some draft language and just sharing some of ideas about that, and so.
Very good.
That is all.
Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Move by Parker, seconded by Atwater. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 10:20.